I'd like all the Tuesday, February first, two thousand twenty-two Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Blevins, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
Yes, we do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is right inside the door when you came into the event center. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Copies of the two thousand twenty-one annual report are at your seat. Let Trent or Robin know if you need more copies and we'll get you some, if you need some to hand out. And thank you, Trent, for another great annual report. The landing is about to get more colorful. The Arts Council will be hanging art displays starting this Friday in the lobby, and they'll rotate the local artists periodically, so look forward to that and be sure to check that out. Congrats to Lieutenant Chris Goli. He has been selected as the American Legion Two thousand twenty-one Nebraska Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. We have submitted for several officers in the past, and this is the first time that we know of that one of the Papillion Officers have been selected, so congrats to him. It's a huge accomplishment. And then continuing the congratulations, congratulations to Nancy and her team. They received the GFPA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual report. And this achievement is the highest form of recognition for governmental accounting and financial reporting, so thank you, Nancy. We have a very professional financial team and we really appreciate it. And then a final congratulations to library and the Library Foundation. They received a grant from Google for assistance in purchasing a new large format printer that will be located in the digital library in the Maker Space. So a big thank you to Google for that award. These grants go a long way in helping libraries, so we appreciate. And then on Monday, February fourteenth, the fifty-five-plus Club is hosting its annual Valentine's Day Dinner in the community gym. In the past, council members have helped serve that, so if you guys want, please come at eleven fifteen on the fourteenth to come help serve. And then finally, the two thousand twenty-two annual Grosse ARB meeting is Thursday, February tenth in La Vista, and let Robin or myself know if you want to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F-one, Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero zero one-two. A resolution to approve applications for the two thousand twenty-two summer fireworks season, July twenty-fifth, June twenty-fifth, July fourth. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero zero one-two? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Sunday. Ms. Clu. Can you turn your mic on real quick?
Did it come on?
It did, thank you.
Sorry, the delay was getting me. I would like to make a motion to approve the original ten while tabling the remaining four applications with direction to city staff to amend the ordinance to allow for the fourteen total permits for the two thousand twenty-two season and refer this ordinance to city staff to make sure that we get recommendations on permits to change starting in two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. And you had handwritten that amendment and gave it to all the councils, so I think everybody sees that motion to amend. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Sunday. And just for our council discussion, a little bit of resident education too. So the difference between a resolution and an amendment, and I just want to double-check with legal that we're doing the right thing. So the number of twelve permits is in ordinance. That cannot be changed except for in other ordinance, and ordinance is the one that takes three readings, an introduction, public hearing, and a vote. So to change the number is your reference to the ordinance. And so the resolution that we have on the floor tonight then would grant the ten, table the four, and then direct staff to begin the ordinance change to make for the total fourteen. And then refer to committee for next year ongoing. Correct. Okay. Is that clear? Okay. Any council discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Gaines.
I would like to make a substitute motion to table this in its entirety until this issue's fixed. We do know that the ten people that we're attempting to approve tonight are already grandfathered in, so they're able to prepare and move forward because they know they're going to be approved. The issue, and this is for council, I'll save the rest of this for council discussion, but substitute amendment or motion to table all of these until it goes to committee and we approve of all at once.
Okay. Mr. Thielen, do I just need to get a second on a substitute motion?
Yeah, that can be a second, and that would be a motion to amend. Then if that's approved, then we take another vote on the main motion, which is...
But if it fails, we're back to the Ms. Clu's motion to amend.
That's correct.
Okay. So is there a second on Mr. Gaines's?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I want to talk about Luanne's motion, so is out of order or...
So if we want to talk about Ms. Clu's, then we need to handle the substitute that's on the floor. If it passes, then we're dealing with that one. If it fails, we'll be back to Ms. Clu's.
Okay.
Any discussion? Mr. Gaines.
So I did want to speak out of order, but last year, we came up here, I proposed an amendment or a new ordinance. I believe Mr. Mungard proposed a new ordinance, and we sat here for a long time debating this. And what we came out of that meeting was, we were going to do a one-time approval of changing this ordinance for last year, and we were going to sit down over the following year and fix this problem. And as we sit here tonight, and as much of the responsibility rests on me as anybody else, we've done nothing. And so now what we're going to do is just try to fix the problem again. We're going to try to rewrite ordinances to fix things that we didn't do over the last year, and I just don't think that that's fair. I think that what we need to do, if we're not happy with the ordinance as it sits, then we amend it, we bring it back in front of the council, we vote on it at that point in time. I think that that, and I also think there might be some legal issues. I defer to Mr. Thielen, but by just approving ten, that's not what we do, that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance, as we sit tonight, says we have X amount of permits to approve, and if we change that, we're almost changing the ordinance, in my opinion. So that's all I have to say.
Ms. Clu.
Thank you. I fully respect what Councilman Gaines is saying about what the ordinance says is twelve. My difficulty is there is no way to evaluate the four as to who the two would be. And when I look at it, I see that there are four organizations that are here for the betterment of the community, they're here for the betterment of youth. So as opposed to sitting here tonight and trying to figure out which two organizations and whose kids are more worthy, I would like to have the solution where we go with ten that are grandfathered in, basically, while we have a working way to get to approving everybody's request for a permit this year, that is for the betterment of the community and for all the kids, realizing that what I'm doing is trying to get it to go back to committee in like August, when we can fully explore how this should be run within our community. Because I, for one, do not want to try to sit here and say, this organization's better than this one, so I'm going to pick these two first.
Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah. There we go. I agree, we did this last year, I thought this was going to be fixed. We're still where we were, but I don't see, as far as I'm concerned, Luanne's motion, if this brings the other four back up next council meeting, I'm fine with that. I don't want this waiting four, five months. We'll just bring it back up, run it again this year, and then make sure we get it fixed before we come back to next year.
Mr. Sunday.
I think everybody wants the same thing, at least I'm gathering that, and it's just a stylistic choice as to which way to go. I think Ms. Clu's motion makes the most sense to me. I don't think any of us want to have everybody here, all these good people here tonight, arguing why their organization is better than the other one. I'm sure you don't probably find that tasteful either, so I'm going to support Ms. Clu's motion.
Mr. Engberg.
Well, frankly, I don't want to go through the same thing we did last year. Should we have made some changes? I thought last year we had some discussion too. Like part of the reason we didn't is because we wanted to evaluate how it would work with additional licenses this last year, and that discussion has not really been done yet. The problem is, I don't want to wait because it holds something over, and we can say tonight that we're going to vote on the ten that are qualified, so to speak, and let our intentions be known by way of this amendment, or this motion, I should say, our intentions to come back, and the other four will know, assuming the votes are there, and I see no reason for what I hear tonight, because they won't be, but they'll be approved. That way, everybody can get on with their planning, because if we wait and try to hammer out a different, complete ordinance, top to bottom, I think that puts them at a disadvantage, because they have to make some plans and do some things in order to be ready to go in June, including some of the supply chain issues everybody's having right now. So I just should not hold it over. And I don't think there's that much broken. I think we're starting to realize a way to do this, very simply, but I think we need to make sure we do it right, and let's take some time and refer it to a committee this time after we're done and get it done, and out of the way instead of holding it over tonight.
Mr. Mungard.
First off, I'm going to agree with Councilman Gaines to some extent, that yes, we should have taken care of this over the last year. He's absolutely correct. There's no reason for us to go through this again, but I don't see any reason to delay the ten. I'm going to vote for Councilman Clu's amendment, simply because it does move us forward at least a minor step, and I will just advise the council members that as we move forward to deal with the other four, I am going to introduce the same two ordinances that I introduced last year, that eliminate the ordinance, the numbers, and uses just the one standard that's in our ordinance, that we allow the maximum number of licenses that may be safely regulated by city agencies. That's what our ordinance says. I think we're playing games when we're doing numbers, let's just stay with that, and I will introduce two ordinances that do that.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
I just wanted to clarify two points. Number one, I'm not suggesting that we sit here and hammer out who these four people are. What I'm trying to do is at least hold myself accountable by, we can send this to committee and make this change, and that's what my amendment is for, and bring an ordinance to the floor that's ready to vote on. And that's, I believe, that's holding this council accountable for being in the situation that we're in today. So I just wanted to clarify, I'm not trying to push this through, and going back to my second point, is those ten people that are, we're going to approve tonight, they're grandfathered in, they're already planning, they know they're going to be approved unless, I mean, that's just where we are, so they can move forward with their lives regardless, but that's just my opinion.
So a yes vote will approve Mr. Gaines's substitute motion, and then if that passes, we'll be back to the original motion as amended by that. If a no vote would cause it to fail, and then at that point, we'll be back to Ms. Clu's motion to amend, and then we'll deal with that. Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. One yay, seven nays by Sunday, Mungard, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, and Engberg.
So a motion fails, so we're back to the original motion to amend, and just again, so we're clear on what it is. It's to approve the original ten, table the remaining four, direction the staff then to amend the ordinance for this year, that the additional four are approved, and then a referral to committee to address the resolution long-term, beginning with next year. Is that correct, Ms. Clu? Okay. Any council discussion then on the motion to amend? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. Seven yeas, one nay by Gaines.
That motion passes, so then just so it is clear, when we talk about the original ten, that was outlined in the original resolution, but I'll go ahead and read it since there will be a vote of the original ten. Number one, Bolino Fireworks, for-profit, they've held it twenty-five years consecutively. Standard Fireworks, for-profit, twenty-five years consecutive. Saint Columbokil Shepherds, nonprofit, twenty-five years consecutive. Sarpy County Swim Club, nonprofit, twenty-two years consecutive. Echo Softball, nonprofit, twenty-two years. Tangier Shrine Center, nonprofit, twenty years. Papillion La Vista Optimus, nonprofit, nineteen years. Papillion La Vista Spirit Football, nonprofit, sixteen years. American Legion Post Thirty-two, nonprofit, sixteen years. And Wellspring Church, nonprofit, five years. Those would be the ten in the motion to amend that was approved. And then the other four will be addressed with the, when the ordinance change comes forward, beginning with the next council meeting. Any other council discussion? Are there any proponents or opponents on the motion as amended? Seen none? Mr. Stube.
I guess maybe just a point of clarification here, because it's going to require an ordinance change, so we're looking at not having something done next council meeting, but it'll be essentially in March before it'll be finalized, correct?
Yeah, good for the public. An ordinance change requires three readings by law, that's an introduction, a public hearing, and a vote, unless there is a waiver of that, that is three separate council meetings, so that is about a six-week process. And so what the next council meeting would be, would be the introduction of that ordinance. The only way that would be sped up then is if any member of the council would want to waive the second and third, but that would take a super majority of the council, so don't assume that that would occur, but you would have a right to do that. So could be done in one meeting with a waiver on second and third. Without a second and third, it's about a six-week process. Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, so the next council meeting will be the introduction of the change for this year to change the number from twelve to fourteen. Next, item F-two, Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero zero one-three. A resolution to approve a license agreement with Harry Bossert, American Legion Post Thirty-two, Two Thirty West Lincoln, regarding the Legion's proposed temporary unlimited use of adjacent small parcel of city park property. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero one-three? Motion by Councilman Engberg, second by Councilman Clu. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F-three, Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero zero one-four. A resolution to approve a master right-of-way agreement with Raven Northbrook LLC for Cape Hart Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. two thousand two hundred and zero one-four? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Clu, Stube, Engberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items, committee reports. Chairman Engberg, Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I've got two weeks to report on. The first one, briefly, was held by the Finance Administration Committee after our last council meeting on the January eighteenth, regarding specifically Oak Leaf Development. The committee recommended that the planning director negotiate a park as part of the development, proposed development, to negotiate setbacks to be standard, or we use, if they use a different product to design for one of their two PUD arrangements in that development, and also asked that the planning director work with the landowner that is going to retain part of the development property to develop a well and septic system with connection to the city system eventually, when it becomes available. Tonight, the F-8 committee met prior to council meeting, we had several items on our agenda. First of all, we had discussion of SID policies, and recommended the planning director continue to develop if or then type thresholds regarding the debt ratio policies we have in place for the SIDs. Many times, four percent isn't realistic as time has gone on, but rather just come up with arbitrary number, it's going to be based on certain thresholds. If this happens, then this will happen, and developers, first of all, don't like uncertainty. This will make it more realistic, and it eliminates the one-off types of things where we have a developer that's slightly over, but there's extenuating circumstances, so that should fix that. As part of the SID policy, we directed that we look at different types of perhaps park fees for developers, which would take into account the type of land involved and those types of things, but have a certain fee for developers to look at when they're deciding on doing a development here. Also, there was a request to review whether or not to allow SIDs to exclude lots from the SID, and we recommended no action on that, because we felt there was no real positive thing to come of doing it, and it could create some real problems, so we asked not to, told the staff not to pursue that any further. The next item on the agenda we had regarding trailers and used construction trailers as size, after quite a discussion about it and First Amendment rights and other items connected with it, at this point in time, the committee recommends no action other than something that may involve safety, which we also, we already have in our ordinance, and we'll perhaps revisit it if we start seeing it becoming a problem. We also discussed leasing of city right-of-ways. There's kind of a gap in our code, as it's written right now. People, including the council and the staff, because there's a gap in the code, really don't have any way to measure what kind of costs there might be in discussions where someone might need to lease a portion of the city right-of-way temporarily or in other ways. So that is going to come back to the full council. We also discussed master fee schedule amendments. Right now, there's a scattering of state laws and city codes that apply to the proper use of public funds, and many times employees have asked questions about it, and it's turned into a, quite a confusing way to find the answers that they need. We're going to put together a master fee schedule amendment that will incorporate use of public funds all in one place, so it's kind of a one-stop shopping if there's any questions about, like I say, providing a plaque for an employee, they're like the service, they can go to one place and just answer to those kinds of questions, and that'll be coming back to the council eventually. We also had some discussion about, in addition to master fee schedules concerning the Recreation Department primarily, and there are some fees that will be decreased in some fashion, some fees will be eliminated. Any fees that might go up, if you take your cross board, will average about twenty-five cent increase, and that's it. Also, there were some adjustments made in the fee schedule so that it makes the fee schedule equitable across an entire department, for example, to make it more equitable, let's say between the landing fees and some fees we might charge at Papio Bay. So that will be coming back to the council. I might mention too, that we really have not increased these types of fees since two thousand nineteen, so, and like I said, it's very minor, on average, twenty-five cents. Lastly, we had some discussion about arterial street improvements and the way their fees are calculated, and we directed the planning director to do some additional research and bring it back to the committee at our next meeting if possible, and we can review any changes that might be necessary to that fee calculation. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the floor? When you come up, if you'd state your name for the record, and comments from the floor get five minutes. Since they are not published agenda items, we can't have an open discussion, but if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Black and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dr. Jeannie Surpass. I am a professor of educational leadership, and tonight I want to talk to the council about the red truck. The red truck is on Cedar Dale. It travels back and forth. It's very loud. My husband was trying to explain to me, there's some sort of muffler on this truck that makes it loud. Today, and that's why I'm here tonight, I was going to wait until two weeks from now to come and visit. I did talk to the mayor's hotline earlier today, but I am teaching a very difficult class to doctoral students. And tonight, when I was teaching, I teach remotely from my home, the red truck was loading vehicles on a trailer in front of our home. He had done this earlier today as well, with this loud red truck. Well, also what happens with this loud red truck parking in front of our home is I have some dogs that bark incessantly because they see someone outside, of course. So we have reported this red truck. We believe that there's possibly a business, he is running out of his home, which I don't know if Cedar Dale is zone commercial or not. But... But, the problem is the loud truck. The loud truck drives very fast down Cedar Dale. Um, it's very disruptive during the day, evenings, and mornings. I'm concerned about the children walking home from school. Today, the incident, the first incident happened, um, when children were walking home from school. The person who drives the red truck, we are concerned about his behavior as well. Our neighbor has witnessed him with a leaf blower, walking in circles, at his two houses down, in circles, not really blowing the lawn, but walking in circles. So, I am not going to predict what might be going on there, but, um, I, I'll leave that up for your opinion. I see Cedar Dale, um, between Carrishill Elementary School and between the cemetery becoming very dilapidated. And I, when I see this sadly, I think about the home that was very recently found in Papillion with a number of animals who are severely hurting, that finally went to the Humane Society. So, I, uh, if you look at the rest of the area in this, in the Cedar Dale community, you will notice that homes are taken care of, for the most part. But they are not on Cedar Dale. They are becoming very dilapidated. Um, one of the homes, I have witnessed a broken window on the front of the street that has been there for months. And I wonder, um, from the city of Papillion, if there is accountability for the renters. My husband and I have begun to worry about our own safety, because we've turned this man in for code violations. And, um, we are also concerned about the safety of our dogs, particularly when we see the circling motion with the, uh, leaf blower.
One, one minute. One minute.
Okay. Finally, I want to commend the board on your transparency. Um, I appreciate what I hear tonight, and, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, can't get into an active dialogue again, because it's not a published agenda item, but I will share that, uh, the last city council meeting, we, the committee, the city council had passed a resolution, um, for the, uh, council committee to work on, uh, looking at adopting a property maintenance code.
Thank you.
Um, and if that is adopted, that will do exactly what you're talking about on, uh, those type of properties. So the, the council is actively working on that. Um, the committee would, and I shared this at the last meeting, the, the committee will come up with recommendations, and then if there are any proposed changes or adoptions, those will come to the full council for full public hearings. Um, so those will, uh, be published. Second, I would say to anybody, if anybody has any public safety concerns, don't wait for a city council meeting, call the police, um, and make a report if there's a true public safety concern. Um, and we do have noise ordinances, so what I would ask is after the meeting, if you can share your information with city staff, uh, the city administrator, they can follow up on your concern, and then see if any reports have been made to the police and circle around with you on the noise ordinance concerns. So, Mr. S- uh, Sunday, did you have a comment? So, we're on to council comments, so.
I was gonna make the exact same.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council comments? Any other comments from the floor? Just, uh, from the last couple of weeks, um, the League of Municipalities has been meeting, and again, reminder, I'm on that executive board. And then also a reminder, council, if there is something going on at the legislature that you have an interest in, um, we're following that very closely. So, uh, make us aware of any specific bills you're interested in, and we can be, get you an updates for that. And then if there are legislative changes you want in the next couple of years, now is a good time to bring those forth, so we can be working on those. Had a, a quarterly update with the Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation. If a funding request that's outstanding comes together, uh, the foundation is hoping to have a groundbreaking on March twenty-ninth, um, so maybe pencil that in. March twenty-ninth is Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day, and, uh, they wanna hold that at Sumter Amphitheater. Again, the congratulations to Officer Golee on the American Legion Officer of the Year. And, um, one other reminder, the police department is in the middle of its, uh, every-three-year accreditation with Kalia. Again, for the public, Kalia is a national accreditation agency. It's voluntary. Um, I'm gonna estimate there's only about one percent of the police agencies in the United States are Kalia accredited, and that even includes State Patrols and FBI. Um, and we are one of, uh, very few agencies that are Kalia accredited. The important thing for the public on the accreditation is there is a long, there is a period where, uh, public comments on anything related to policing, um, there, there's a period where you can comment on that, and, uh, if you want information on that, let us know. And the water bill that just went out actually had information on how the public can make comments, um, in regards to police, um, in Papillion. And that will be, uh, information will be fed on to the, uh, individuals that are doing our reaccreditation. I think that's most of my comments. Any, anything else from the council? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Sunday?
Yes.
Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yea, zero nays.
We are adjourned.